The issue that I'm just seeing potentially happening is developers discussing with the NDAs, but none of those property, those immediate property owners or people living in those properties right next to them are not involved. So the NDA may be making a decision, but not having the input of those that are directly impacted. So if we're going to do something like that, and I would at least have, I would at least hope that the NDA would then take it upon itself to have somebody from their end or the developer's end and speak to us. People who want to change the property. But I just don't want to, I don't want to eliminate voice or minimize voices, especially those voices that are most impacted from potential development. Because, I mean, you know, the NDA is not, as much as we want it to be, it's not representative of everybody. If it's impacting a certain group that's not comfortable approaching those type of groups and organizations, how do we, if we're going to do that, we have to find a way to eliminate that barrier.
So are we talking about buildings or new buildings downtown? I mean, are we talking about buildings where the people in 300 feet would already get noticed or not necessarily?
Not necessarily.
I mean, I do think a lot of NDA leaders do go contact those neighbors who are next door to the new development. They want them to engage, but there's nothing that requires that. Um, the other sort of issue with this kind of requirement is that some of the NDAs don't meet with summer. And so if a developer is trying to move, the NDA isn't going to meet for two more months. That's also, you know, that's not really fair.
I know in other cities of works where the developer actually sets up a meeting with the NDA, they don't meet at the meeting, at the NDA meeting. They actually have, because of the timing limits, they actually have to work with the NDA to find the time.
Interesting.
I have my issues with NDAs because historically they were put in place to keep people out of their presence. So that's, that's all I'll say about that. Going to ask folks, going to ask the organization that historically has been put in place to keep blacks, Jews, whatever, out of a neighborhood, that's a struggle for me to say, hey, let's go talk to them and see. That's just my whether or not we do it.
Well, I mean, we should have another conversation another day about how to get more folks to engage in that. And we have had some of our NDAs kind of taken over by a new wave of ones.
I'm just gonna add, I think there's two things that are coming up tonight, and I've heard them historically. One is whether or not we need to talk about how planning interacts with the NDAs and whether or not there's a different conversation. Today I heard at least three voices say, you're interested in that dialogue, it probably doesn't need to be in this profession. And I can add into the presentation. The second piece, I think, is what Congressman McEmes is talking about, which is the role that NDAs historically played in our equity work. And that presentation I'm expecting in May, where we actually get the audit and we talk about kind of what the plannings are from that interaction. So if you're comfortable, I'd like that piece till maybe June. And I can add both of those themes to the agenda. Is that okay? Okay.
Well, we thought that being said, I really like how you all are trying to streamline. Makes, makes a lot of sense to give a look at, make it standard. I actually wish we did that in education between TSPC and teacher prep programs. And, you know, there's no kind of alignment and everybody's off. So it's really, it's really cool that you all are doing this.
Thank you. I think it's going to make it easier for developers, for neighborhoods, and for staff.
No, I had a few, other than this, I had a few questions and anything else? Okay.
Just on the townhome debt, about increasing, right? Was there a suggestion from the planning commission of what to do?
I think it was just to the same, same level, for the same 25 units.
Okay, okay.
Same as the residential, the modern residential.
Other questions? Okay, well, I'll go to mine then. I was stunned to read that we have a 5,000 square foot childcare limit in our code. In the, in the chart of uses, something about 5,000 square feet. We have a lot of our downtown that's childcare affluent. I thought that was very interesting. There may be probably each one, maybe isn't 5,000, isn't more than 5,000, but it might be something we need to, I guess, I can look at. Then on page SS23, where you were striking one of the big charts. And I was, I understood why some of them were struck, but I did not understand why. SS23 was the strike. Yeah, can you explain why SS23 is the the floor area ratio, minimum floor area ratios? And then two pages prior to that is the new minimum floor area ratio. But I don't see what the difference is. Maybe I'm missing it, but not seeing what the difference is.
See, I can't.
Sorry, we have to find it. Obviously, we're looking for what you're talking about. Pardon? We have to find it. I'll try to pack it. It's not.
Oh, you don't have the packet open?
Yeah, I do have the packet open, but it's, I don't know why.
Sorry, SS23?
It says 21 and 23. What's the difference? And I, I mean, you don't have to answer that here. Maybe you want to take that one back.
You just, let me just see if I can figure it out. And I, let's see, am I in charge of sharing the screen over here or do you need it?
Yep, I don't, I can also.
See, I'm just a little disoriented about how to.
Yeah, I can just let it down.
Oh, if you can share.
We'll have to make it bigger if you want everyone to. Um, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I thought.
SS21 and SS23. Oh, because it's over there. Yeah.
Yeah, I can actually speak to this a little bit. That was part of our graphics cleanup. So you correctly identified that the intent was to be policy neutral in switching out those maps. The intent was not to change the, the FARs that were required on different blocks. But we had the opportunity to update the base maps that were used in those graphics and to make the graphic language consistent with the new graphics proposed elsewhere in the code. So all the maps got a refresh. We also found like a few odd discrepancies, like blocks that didn't, didn't have any standard applied or that just didn't quite align with some of the text descriptions. So there's some very minor cleanups in the new proposed maps. But they are essentially intended to be policy neutral and just an improved version of the existing maps with consistent graphic language.
Right, this is SS21 and.
Does it answer your question, Mayor Beatty?
Well, yeah, I can see that the underlying map itself, like on 21, it's like a faint underlying map. And on 23, it's a bolder underlying map. Is that what you're saying?
Right, it's just the graphics.
Graphic.
Right, not, not changing the ratios anywhere, just improving the, or making, improving and making consistent the, the base map.
Okay. Um, okay, and then talk to me a little bit about the art recommendation. I did not get to go back and look at the mission. I've tried to do that before, but yeah. Talk to me a little bit about why the art, post-art recommendation was being problematic. I guess I thought our lawyer was going to be here today, so I was going to ask him that, but.
We can pretend to be a law.
Pretend to be an attorney often. Yeah, I do that with engineering as well, and building department. I feel led by a lot. I think, so the desire of the planning commission was to see if there were ways to get public art as part of new development downtown. And so identifying this as a potential opportunity, like can we establish a, an art, a public art element with some, if we're going to do it, it needs to be parallel to all the other ones. So it needs to have a purpose statement, which we could come up with. And, but then it needs to have some standards. And then you could provide some guidelines or guidance for it. And I think my simplistic understanding of it is that because art by its nature is discretionary, you're already kind of in trouble, or at least starting to potentially get away from what, if there's a you, like what you are going to like or think is appropriate for the community. We could, we could say, you know, provide, we could try to establish some sizes and we could try to carve out some different media, you know. If it's 2D, make it be, you know, it must be at least 20 square feet. Or if it's a 3D thing, it must be this mini cubic feet or something like that. And, and we could list all the types of media that we could think of that it could be. But, but it would, it's, you're, you're not going to have a voice or control in what, what I'm going to say the art is for my building versus what you were really hoping or expecting to get as a, as a community. That on, on a fundamental level, I think, was, was a problem. I think the, the challenge that Justin, the city attorney, brought up in part was to, you're also potentially running into taking state and our territory because you are, basically, you are requiring something for public use. That is, I need you to provide a sculpture indefinitely in your building for, for the public without providing any compensation for it. So there's that level of, of problem as well, I think.
Quick question, what, what's the, is there, is there any overlay and what's the specific difference in, say, requiring a caxel tree to paint their big giant white, white wall, right? And then requiring the same thing, because that's art, too, we require them to do something.
We didn't require them to do that mural.
Yeah, I think a key was, again, providing some options.
Right, but we told them, I thought they could be the place. It was the code already in place.
Well, they were not going under clear objectives.
Right.
Right.
They went through a discretionary.
Right, right. So so that was one of the options that they could use. And so then that's the one that they chose, but that was through a discretionary process. We don't have a way to provide clear and objective standards. And we've looked at all, we looked at, I don't know, 20 jurisdictions in Oregon, not one has a clear and objective process for providing public art because it's just not actually possible. The only way you could really do it is if you have, say, if you go through a variance and you have a public art program, right? That says you can take this, take this out of the developer's hands and put it into a public art program where the public art, you have the arts committee and they look at the mural, they look at the sculpture, they look at, at those things and they decide collectively that that's something that could be approvable, but we can't require that to be done. It has to go outside the process. I'm not sure I articulated that very well, but if you want to get into the weeds in it, the staff report from last time, kind of, because it really lays out all of, all of the arguments for why it's just not possible.
And to be fair, the planning commission did a really nice job of that. They understood, I think, on one level, what they were trying to get at. So they thought, well, we require a fee in lieu of art and I get you to meet the requirement by agreeing to get into a discretionary process to provide some art. And just for different reasons, those all did not work for really staying in a clear and objective process. So.
We don't have a public art requirement on ourselves, right? You know, the city buildings have.
Right, because you can, you actually can have that requirement. City buildings can.
Yeah, but you can't have that as a, can't have a 1% for art that was.
It's only for public buildings on public, through public development.
Um, my other thing is, and I'm a broken record about this, I know, but let's get rid of all the shells. A lot of shells in there.
Okay, yeah, I'm trying to get after a bunch of them.
Go just search and replace. I mean, you gotta read each one and figure out what the right place. Um, anything else from anybody? Okay. Right on top.
Perfect, thank you.
Came to see you March 21st.
Yes, questions, if people are looking closer or questions come up, do contact staff. Or if you have questions ahead of, how much we first try and give them heads up.
Yeah, definitely. That's super helpful. Just feel free to call for it.
Right.
You can talk.
Yeah, thank you, Elizabeth, for being available.
Yes, thank you all. Thanks for the input. We look forward to coming back and presenting this for review.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And our second last question for the evening. Continue those parts. Our full-on major recreation programming, parks at D.C.
Thank you for the freeze. Thank you for your attention.
Uh, yes, maybe you'll have to, it's in there, but you just have to close this one and open it up. I can help with that, too.
Okay, perfect.
All right, Public Works Director Peter Passerelli.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Beatty and council members. I'm Peter Passerelli, the Parks Director. I also have with me tonight Zach Hazel and John Gillarducci from SCS. They're here tonight to talk about our SDC methodology that we prefer, considering.
Yeah, everyone, Milwaukee first.
Thank you very much. Ah, so several months ago, I presented to the council an update on, on our parks, on parks and looking at the city contemplating taking over the parks, the neighborhood parks in Milwaukee. From the Park District. And I outlined a financial forecast and a structure there for that, that scenario. After, after further review and some additional considerations and discussions with, you know, the Park District and, and our staff, you know, we've come back with a, with some additional information that considers the city managing the parks with the inclusion of the North Placmas Park, as well as the Milwaukee Community Center. So what we're going to talk about tonight is that in those considerations that we looked at, and as we started down this path to look at that, we engaged Ballard King and Associates. They're a parks consultant out of, out of Colorado to help us take a look at the recreation component and social services. I don't know. You got it?
Or I'll break it up too. I'm so sorry.
So Ballard King helped us put together a financial forecast and some recommendations for the operations of the Milwaukee Community Center. What it would mean for us to, to manage that, that facility as well as the inclusion of that, that large park in the Blackness Park. So they, they, they put together some revenue forecasts and expense forecasts for those, those facilities. And I included those into the, into our forecast. And they provided us, like I said, some, some staffing recommendations to go on, to, to manage that. Going through that process, Ken Ballard, who was the consultant that we worked with, had conversations with staff from NCPRD, the Milwaukee Community Center and elsewhere in NCPRD. And to develop a better understanding of what services are being provided at that, at that facility and what recreation services the Park District provides. And then he, he, he put together some recommendations for that as well. And then in addition to that, I had conversations with staff at NCPRD, Milwaukee Community Center, as well as park providers in Wilsonville or in City and see, manage those facilities, their community centers as well, to get a better understanding on the, what are the challenges and opportunities for running these types of centers. And then the other, the other piece that, that John and Zach will talk about tonight is this interim SDC methodology. Because that was another component in terms of the financial piece of managing parks that we needed to take a look at. If we transitioned from, from the Park District and, and all those operations in house, we needed to have a mechanism to charge SDCs for development. So John and Zach will talk a little bit about that. So, you know, one of the things we found out about the Milwaukee Community Center that I, I certainly wasn't aware of when I started down this path. It is like one of the largest meal providers in the state. It is significantly larger than Wilsonville and Oregon City, Happy Valley, in terms of services that they provide. So it's a very large service facility. It's got a large senior service focus on, on social services, nutrition. That's those meals, all those programs and transportation services as well. Currently, based off of information that I got from the center's staff, they serve about 250 meals a day from that facility. 50 of those are generally going to Milwaukee residents. They have a total of about 300 people signed up. But not everybody takes a meal every day. So so Milwaukee's represents about 20% of the meals that are served on the DCS to Milwaukee residents. You know, the, the funding for that facility is generally through grants. The Older Americans Act provides a grant resource, Teflon Fair resource to provide nutrition grants, some of the social services grants. They also are funded through contributions. Some of the local businesses provide lots of contributions, contributions to the facility. And then they also get support from NCPRD's general.
That was the source.
Right. And, you know, really the bottom line is there, that facility, based on the analysis that Ken Ballard had put together, it's, it's subsidized through their general fund by about 710,000, give or take.
So that's just the meals part. I mean, they, they do rent that facility. We were there for our retreat and they have bonsai people and they, you know, they run into quilt shows and they're kind of different things. So that money go into the
It does.
The social services?
That goes in, so the total operations of the facility subsidized by about 710,000.
Okay.
So all of the revenues that they get from, you know, their events, their, their, their recreation programs that they, that they get there. Those all, all go in to run that center, but the center itself, all of, all of, all of the personnel and expenses, there's about a 710,000 subsidy that NCPRD General Fund.
And do I understand correctly that they don't really, their budgetary data doesn't really clearly break down how much of it is the social services versus the recreation versus the?
It, it was a challenge to get some of that information. I, I think Ken did a, a pretty good job after numerous conversations with their staff to, to get it broken down a little bit better. I, I, I can't say that they, that they don't break it down, but it's just, the information wasn't readily available. And the, the information wasn't readily available and, and easy from, from, from the district. But yeah, so I, I, I think the real, the real piece here is that there's, you know, a $710,000 general fund subsidy that, that's funded from district rock, district-wide property tax. So, you know, one of the consideration, a consideration here is if we were to manage this, we've got that loss and that subsidy. And, you know, we would need to either come to some sort of agreement with, with the county or the district on getting funds backfed from, from the rest of the district to, to feed, to feed the services that are provided to non-Milwaukee residents up or, or perhaps not provide those services to those non-Milwaukee residents, which would be, which would be a, a challenge in itself.
And this whole thing made me really, I was surprised earlier on, discussions when they didn't seem to want to keep the Milwaukee Center, they didn't seem to have any motivation to keep the Milwaukee Center. And this, this year's staff report made me even more incredulous about that, like. And this this year's staff report made me even more incredulous about that, like. Yeah.
So yeah, so this was one of the big, one of the big items that that we certainly determined going through this analysis was that was that deficit. And then as we took a look at the additional operations of that park, adding the the North Clackamas Park to that, to the to the mix. You know, Ken's recommendation was we needed to make some updates to the personnel structure that we had because some of the additional maintenance requirements that we were going to have at the park and taking care of that larger park, we would need an additional parks technician, some additional, as well as some additional part-time staff. But also an operations and service supervisor that would need that would need to oversee that broad reach of the parks maintenance. And I think we were also considering using this person if we did transition from the park district to assist, you know, bring this person on board early on and help us with this transition taking over the parks from the park district. But that but those additions resulted in about another 270,000.
And that operation and service supervisor is a it's not a programmer for athletics. They're just an operational kind of keeping it.
It's it's sort of that manager supervisor person to to make sure things, sort of the Kevin case in.
It's not a, it's not the programming.
They could certainly could assist with the programming. I think what we were contemplating is there there is some room perhaps on Milwaukee Community Center side to use the personnel there to do some increased program that outside of the community.
Pardon?
Yeah. So could Peter, could you go back to the last one? So first of all, let me caveat what I could say with, I think that this is a valuable services whether it were to Milwaukee residents or the members of the district that I think that, you know, collectively, you know, we'd want to see, you know, bet. But then I start to ask myself this question, parks and recreation. And this looks like social services to me.
I've had that that same question.
And again, I think that they're valuable services, but are they parks and recreation services?
I asked that question to to the NCPRD staff. I've asked it to the other community center supervisors that I talked with in Oregon City and Wilsonville. And it's it's sort of becoming great as part of the parks and rec services.
It's become that way, but I just asked the question, is it is it in the right lane?
Yeah, one of the what was shared with me, one of one of one of the people that I talked with shared with me that what they thought happened was back in the seventies, you know, there was this push for, you know, providing additional services to seniors. At that time, lots of there were dollars, lots of money available for construction of communities. You know, communities took a look at that and tried to leverage the community center as not just a place to provide senior services, but a place to provide other recreation services for the community. So it sort of got wrapped into wrapped into parks in a lot of places. It's not always like that. It certainly seems that way here regionally. It's a strong time.
And are those other parks, our Wilsonville and Oregon City subsidizing the meal programs out of their parks funding?
They didn't. Yeah. So, I mean, it's all part of it's all part of their Parks and Recreation Fund program. Now, they all they don't all necessarily provide the service the same way. Happy Valley, they have a very low amount of meals on nutrition services. So they just have a direct contract provider that delivers the meals. Oregon City doesn't cook the meals. They buy the meals already cooked and then they they steam them and reheat them. And then most, I believe, cooks cooks their meals as well. So.
And they're all transferring, their meals programs are not covered by, there were grants they get, they are additionally subsidized from parks.
The the grants, what I learned with the grants that they get from the Older American Act, those grants that are available for those nutrition services do not cover the cost of those nutrition services that are provided. So they're either subsidized through, you know, perhaps a parks fee or a general fund or or some other mechanism. You know, Happy Valley, because they have a low amount, they probably don't have to subsidize. There's not a lot of meals. I think from what I learned in there, they maybe have to stay provided.
Um.
I was just going to add, one of the other issues that arose is that there wasn't sufficient funding to run the whole district. We've seen that as we're booking at all these dollars. So I also think part of what happened is they brought as many dollars to the building as they could or to provide direct services. And it just sort of got co-opted into that building. It's long been a frustration from some of the recreation board members for NCPRD, just that they don't feel like they get sufficient recreation services, but NCPRD has also been on this other side saying we've got to keep the doors open. This is these grant funds that will help. So I think there's a whole bunch of things that go into how we got there.
So going back to where you were, well, councilor, going back to where you were on the staffing additions to manage North Clackamas Park, you know, and you showed that in here, but where, what's the staffing that we would need for the Milwaukee Center?
Well, I think what we were what we were contemplating and what, you know, the recommendation from Ken was that we would start staffing that they have, so they have eight full-time staff. For full-time equivalent staff that provide providing services you know, related to cooking food, to providing the recreation programs, to doing maintenance and driving the buses.
Oh, it's even the bus drivers.
Yeah, so they they do have those, or doing the bus driving and the transportation coordination as well. But they also have a volunteer coordinator, that volunteer, they have over like 500 volunteers that provide assistance, deliver meals and help out with the different programs and things. So I mean, it's a very robust program. You know, I learned talking with the other communities, Milwaukee Community Centers, I by far the large, the big, you know, the big, big big person in the in the room. They they've got they've got a lot of staff there for sure. You know, one of the discussions that we had with Ken was, are there opportunities or, you know, efficiency future in that. And, you know, his his initial take was, you know, I wouldn't recommend doing that now, you know. At a few years down, as you learn the ropes and understand how things are working, maybe there are some opportunities. You know, talking with some of the other providers, they're jealous about the staffing that the Milwaukee Community Center has. So. You know, that's a good, good question. I didn't, I didn't really think to look at that. I just sort of collectively looked as you know, the community center in North Clackamas Park being co-located in its one property and the center is part of the larger property.
So when you drive in, there's kind of a gate, that's the new center. I think all of that is is because I was on the planning commission before there were ball fields there, still green space and yeah. So we turn right into the center as we continue on. Here with the parking lot where the driver's education program kind of needs some oh, do they? I think all of that areas.
Yeah. 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 So the entire parking lot, all the parking lot in the North Clackamas community are all part of that larger.
It's in some days, they're still parking at the church. Um. Or is it also
beauty service? I don't think we have a park. But I also just wanted to say we do have two parks in there. There are five. So we own all the parking lots, but there's one that goes along the south edge of the park. And then there's one actually right behind where that big building is that's by the hillside that's on the east.
But those are, I mean, those are really sort of small, small strips that aren't aren't developed. So, you know, with with the Milwaukee Community Center and the addition of North Clackamas Park in 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 this scenario, there's a need for close to a million dollars in additional revenue. So, you know, the original scenario that we outlined was, let's, let's keep the levy. And what we've what we found going through that, in the table on the on the top, we're at a deficit that that very first year. You know, it's in the report, but roughly 700, you know, $40,000 to start off with that first year. Levy amounts, the same that that's currently in place. So we took a look at a couple of different options and settled on, you know, for discussion, the levy at a dollar. That levy at a dollar provides a positive cash flow for four years, keeps us in a positive cash balance. Three years, six, there are some declining revenue streams in years five and six. But in terms of operating and maintaining writing the services for this first six years, you know, our our initial forecast seems to indicate that that's that's doable. Now, this doesn't contemplate any capital. That's, you know, most of the capital work that we that we do is funded, you know, through grants other special project funds or bond. So this is just operations, maintenance facilities.
And this is operating a smaller recreation program. There's not a 4,000. You know, there's not a gym. There's, I mean, it means it's dance classes.
Right.
Sort of low impact sports or whatever, but it's not a full fledged.
But it but it also includes providing all the services to the district, right, to non-district, to non-Milwaukee residents. Right?
We have had some initial conversations about having that. So priced it as it were.
Would you repeat what you said initially? I'm sorry.
Yeah, so the Little Hoopers is the example, right? So making sure that there was still access for students to be able to play basketball or whatever those sports are that are provided under NCPRD. We did price that into the cost. That includes things like rental estate that we would have to undergo in order to be able to buy that.
And you did or did not? The question?
So if we were to do a levy, right? Do we know what that what that would average out to be per month? I mean, I'm looking at just median Milwaukee housing values like 400,000, that's probably the largest.
I think in the yeah, in the in the staff report, so, you know, Toby and I took a look at what that would mean for a home that that's at that median residential assessed value. So currently, that home under that 54 cent levy is $114 a year.
Oh, is that that's really sitting at our tax rate?
Yeah. So that's what that's what that median home value that's
value is like 250,000.
I think where we landed was 213,000, right?
213?
So a, you know, increasing the levy to a dollar would increase that annual fee to $213,000. So there'd be about an 98, $99 increase in that property tax. So yeah, so add like, you know, roughly about eight eight dollars a month difference to that we you know, assessed.
Now, when a house is sold, county reassesses it.
The county.
Yes, but I want my home values.
Toby, maybe you can help me out here on this one.
So I can't speak to your home. The what I've always been told by assessors is assessed values, assessed value, they can only increase it by 3% per year unless there's been some some significant redevelopment that has happened to that home. In which case then they can come in and do a more complete reassessment. They still try and maintain those ratios of real market value to assessed value. So as we discussed at the budget committee last night, that's around 50% right now. So so anyways, what what we were able to do is take these two levy amounts and kind of put it for the typical single-family home in Milwaukee, how much would they pay under these two, essentially, what are they paying now? Right. That top one. And then what would they pay to make this parks model sustainable for a little less than a decade?
So I think we were told that you that because of the way we left the fire district or joined the fire district and had some tax increment left to us, that we could go out for a bigger ask and not have to be on it every five years.
It's not necessarily a bigger ask. It's the second part to what you were just saying. So the local option levy, you need to go every five years for renewal or a slight increase. Because we have room between the amount that we actually levy as part of the voter approved move to bring the fire district out and what under measure 550 we're allowed to do. Essentially, that increment went Essentially, that increment went with the fire district. We actually have the ability with the vote uh to increase the amount of property taxes we're allowed to do in a one D needed need to be renewed every five years. That said, uh, also part of the discussion we had at budget committee last night, property tax revenue growth, as this shows, does not keep up with the growth in in costs. Eventually, whatever rate we we would choose, eventually, we're going to need to adjust it. Or come up with some other revenue stream to help supplement. Uh, so at about a dollar, that's going to happen somewhere around year nine, give or take.
So there's nothing, I mean, we have, um you know, some big thing. If we make the move to move the district, we still have some big things to talk about. A uh systems plan and addressing all deferred. Um, is there anything that stops us? And so we've talked about it previously, like the last council, last last fall, the council was talking about. Uh, we go for a first levy and then while we're in year three or four of that, we do that master planning. You know, we show people what they would get if we went for a bigger. Is there anything that stops us from still taking that approach, going for a more, you know, not using up our, uh, I think of the, you know, the one-time vote the first time. And when you do a five-year levy and still have that option down the line to take the one time.
Milwaukee has a local option levy for any, whether it's parks or anything else, that it does that that does not uh reduce the amount of capacity that we have against the five fifty ones. That answer question?
Mayor, would you? There's a train of thought there that I'm not sure I followed, that maybe you heard the previous council's discussion. Uh, why, why you would want that approach, sort of a one-two approach?
Well, I mean, at the previous council's discussion, to be clear, we were talking about just asking for the single.
Fifty percent.
Fifty percent. Um and we thought we were going to have to go every five years. So when the news came that, you know, there was this analysis under measure five fifty where we have room to ask for a dollar or a dollar change, um I just want, uh so the I I mean, the the idea was we would ask for what NCPRD had asked for and we would get started and we would work on a system-wide plan and we would work on what we're going to do about pool. If we couldn't reach agreement for continuing to use the aquatic center, which I I don't think we should give up on, because it's still a conversation we should pursue, but, um I just want to make sure we didn't have to use our best option. Out the gate if we want to use it.
If it was a one-time deal, that would that would make a difference on what you asked for.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so and and I think, you know, I I think what this, the tables here show, back 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 to that is like at the fifty-four cents. We can't do it without some additional revenue, without additional general fund revenue or or money from somewhere else. There's it it just doesn't, it just doesn't pencil out there. Uh, and I I and I would point out again that much of that is due to that Milwaukee Community Center and the North Black Forest Park, those additional those additional, uh, the additional park and the facility there had about a million dollars in additional expense and of revenue.
So if we negotiated a deal where they continued to operate. We could go for fifty-four times?
Uh I think we would, we would, I think it would depend on what the, you know, the terms of that negotiation were. You know, fifty-four cents, uh, you know, the original uh analysis showed that we were able to pass that out. Similar to, you know, year year five and six, we started to see declining revenues uh as well. Uh, so that that's certainly still a a possibility.
Well, I mean, I think by year five and six, hopefully we have a system-like plan. They also are going out for a higher man, which we know they are discussing. Um you know, so I mean, the in even by year three, maybe, but well, I quite different, right?
I mean, that goes back. I just wanted to make sure it's really clear. The proposal that Peter put forward a couple of months ago was without those two services and that's why I got that proposal. We did originally have a discussion with NCPRD about not providing services at that site. Uh, they they did express they were not interested in providing services at that site, but that is, that's something that council has the ability to go and talk to them about.
Well, I'll I'll throw another one in here is that, yeah, there's a, there's a deficit. And I'm not su- I I I think there's, no matter how you slice it, there's going to be some sort of deficit. But, you know, one of the other things you can do is reduce expenses. And this will sound awful, but you take the non-Milwaukee residents off of the the social services list. Okay?
Let the county figure out how to provide them service.
And so I think there'll still be a deficit, but it it will be a million dollars. Say again, I'm not going to. I I'm not saying that they're going to be sacrificed. I just think that they might go to, no, I, when I'm saying this, that they would might uh that those meals would go to to the organizations where those residents were part of.
Right. And CPRD would provide.
Sure, that would be part of the negotiation.
I mean, I can't see the county commissioners letting two hundred people be.
Well, you know, I I, you know, there's a lot of things that I don't want to see happen. I don't want to see Milwaukee residents paying, you know, double the aquatic fees either, but that's been bounced around. Unfortunately, it's kind of got into this ugliness. And uh, so I hope none of this stuff comes to pass. But I'm just laying out all the the avenues here.
Okay, do you want to move on to SDC?
Yeah, uh, we can move on to SDC. So, uh we did engage with uh with FCS to help us together in in our SDC methodology. You know, I've invited them tonight to come come back and talk, talk to you about uh that methodology and and the process that they went through. You know, when we started out on this, what we did is we uh we reviewed NCPRD's uh capital plan and pulled out the projects that were related to Milwaukee parks out of that, out of that list and included in, included those in there. Uh, some of those projects are 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 pretty substantial. There's a pretty substantial one at North Black Forest Park uh that that uh has a a pretty high price tag uh that has a a significant impact on on that SDC rate. But uh what what the FCS group uh did was they went through that process and put together that sort of maximum allowable SDC that we could charge based on this methodology. Doesn't mean that we have to charge that maximum fee, but this would be based on the methodology what could be charged. So, uh, I will get their presentation up and running here and they can.
So while Nicole's getting me set up. The uh this chart in one oh six of the project, it has one year acquisition cost and development cost. Curious about what that, these are all future projects. These aren't things that has been built.
They're all future projects. There was quite say they're a master candidate, some of the plates work on them.
Well, okay. And so what's the two point seven million for plumber? I mean, we're doing some natural area restoration, maybe, but.
That that was, that was one of the projects they have identified. With some additional, you know, restoration, restoration work involved. Uh, in that it's it's there. But they got in their, in their program.
And the plan was that we were going to go back and do the faster, the. So we just cut rates, their their master planning into ours and then we added a couple of projects that we members have talked about for years like this.
Okay, so I'm uh I'm John Diller Ducci, uh principal with FCS Group. And uh, I'm here with Zach Hazel as. The way that we've laid this out, I'll give a little bit of background on system development charges. Um, and then Zach will walk us through, kind of fly over the calculations. He's going to focus on the results of each of our analyses that result in the full calculation. We can dive as deep as you want. So if you have questions or would like us to further explain the math, we can, uh, but we'll go through each of those individual inputs. Um, but first of all, just as a a reminder about what system development charges are, um, they are provided for in in the ORS for water, wastewater, stormwater, transportation in tonight's topic, parks. These are the one-time fees paid at the time of development by development, uh as opposed to ongoing rates. Um, we can only use SDC revenues for capital projects, so they can't cover any of the operating deficits or anything like that. Uh, and we calculate them based on the cost of land projects. In some cases, infrastructure projects that have already been built. There's a very small element here in this calculation that's buy into existing capacity. And generally, therefore, a share of park system capacity, the 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 big stuff, right? Not, um, if this were a water utility, it's not for the meter or the connection it or the reservoir for the big system facilities, likewise with parks. We follow the law very carefully. It's it's well laid out in ORS two, two, three, two ninety-seven through three sixteen. Um, tells us what we have to consider in the calculation, how the money can be spent, what kind of notice we have to provide before we adopt a new methodology, what components are necessary in the project list. So we we follow those rules very carefully um in order to calculate system development charges. The the framework for the calculation is shown here. When you have the two pieces that buy in to any existing system capacity, it's called reimbursement fee. To calculate the reimbursement fee, we have to isolate the cost or value of unused capacity that's available for growth to use in the existing system. And that's dollar amount of that is our numerator. We divide it by the growth that it will serve. And that gives us our reimbursement fee, as it is named in the statute.
So it sounds, I mean, that makes perfect sense, so when you're talking about a sewer pipe.
Right.
It makes less sense when you're talking about a park.
And it it and that's why we have a very small reimbursement fee and and if depending on the approach we take, we might not have a reimbursement fee at all. Uh, the the method we took to calculate the maximum legally defensible charge gives us a small reimbursement fee and Zach will explain how how that is derived. But the big number is in the improvement fee. And that is the list of planned capital projects. It's the growth-related share of each project in that numerator. And then again, we divide it by the growth that it will serve and that gives us our improvement together.
The ORS set a outward out horizon, twenty, is it twenty years? Is it?
No, no limit. And i- in fact, our our preference is to is to look out as far as we can. So have a as comprehensible list as possible and as long a planning period as possible. Believe it or not, that usually results in a more stable and lower charge over time than if you're looking in shorter windows where you might have a big project in the next ten years. And then it falls on the next ten years of growth if you were to analyze it that way. I hope that makes sense. Um, but yeah, no, no guidance as far as how far out we look statute. Um, so what we're what we're showing here now are the current S park SDCs as they apply in City of Milwaukee is in that one column. Those other zones are the remaining NCPRD service area. They have they charge different SDCs in different parts of the NCPRD service area. Um, as we have been working with them um on SDCs, the initial recommendation is to move toward a more uniform approach, but that's where this data came from. We happen to be working with NCPRD. Um, as they were developing the project list, which fed us the information we need to do this interim book at what.
You're their consultant for their SDC.
We are, and we talked with both parties and everybody was was just fine with us, yeah, um. You know, as acting information, we're not advocating a position, we're just.
So how did they hire, you know, not quite twice as high, but significantly higher SDC elsewhere?
So this, these charges are the result of an analysis that was done, I think, before two thousand and ten. And we, way before we came along. So I I'm not sure. Um, they looked at projects planned in each of those different areas and the growth expected in those areas and calculated the charge of replying. So it had to do with projects and growth was expected.
And just, just one more reminder on this. So this is the interim SDC that we would we we would have that opportunity to put in place from the the point where we left the district until we completed a new master plan, identified uh future projects and, you know, with the full engagement of the community to develop that, those list of projects that that we that we would do. So this is sort of like just that that bridge to make sure that we're getting some revenue that's related to growth.
Which might be another reason not to adopt the full, fully calculated fees, a bit of a spoiler alert there, but uh, yeah. Okay, so uh, yeah, now we'll we'll walk through the calculations again based on that data that we have from NCPRD um and and additional work from uh with city staff, so.
All right, so focusing on the maximum, uh, or sorry, focusing first on the top part of this. We see that the max charge is twenty-six thousand four seventy dollars per single-family dwelling unit. And in that first gray section at the top, you can see the cost bases. Those are the numerators of the calculation broken out into their components. So you can see the improvement fee there, thirty-six point eight million, the reimbursement fee, half a million, and compliance cost one point eight million. So really, this is mostly driven by the projects, total cost basis there being thirty-nine point two million. We divide that by the growth in system demand, in this case measured by residential equivalents. We'll talk about that briefly, what that means. Uh, of thirty-nine hundred, we get a total SDC per residential equivalent there of ten thousand dollars. Based on occupancy, these different uh dwelling unit types based on census data, that's how you get the charges you see at the bottom there. So um, on on average, a single-family dwelling in Milwaukee has two point six residents, so they get two point six times the SDC per residential.
If I could add one other thing too. So as we went through these calculations or or this this process, you know, we we did go back and review some of our growth projections. You know, we we linked it back to what we've done on our on our wastewater SDC that they worked on, talked to Joseph and and planning planning team as well to make sure that those are still valid assumptions. So we're sort of using sort of the same growth projections. That we used on the, on, on the wastewater.
And that is actually, this first slide here is about that growth in system demand. So we have, you'll see here residents. Employees and residential equivalent employees. There's the third row here and we're projecting this for twenty twenty and twenty forty. And a residential equivalent employee is basically one employee but adjusted downwards. For the relative demand they have compared to a resident. Obviously, they're gonna have less demand during work hours. And based on commuting patterns, whether they live in Milwaukee or not, they're gonna have different levels of demand. So, but briefly, put simply, we've equivalated, calculated equivalency for those employees. And apply that to the employee row that you see there to get residential equivalent employees. Now we have a, one unit that we can combine with the residents to get a simple growth calculation in the bottom row. Total residential equivalents there, thirty-nine hundred. That way we're measuring all things in the same way. Then also on the far right there, you see a growth share column of fifteen point four two percent. And that represents in twenty forty, the end of the population, or the end of the forecast. What percentage of the population is broke will have arrived between now and then. All right. Just, so just to, low on time, so focusing on the results in the far right here, sorry for the small font. We have two categories that we're measuring, uh, parks in. We're measuring them in terms of parks and natural area acreage. And also miles of trail. And on the far right, those far two columns, you can see eligibility there, a hundred percent. For parks and natural areas, zero percent for trails, but that's only because we don't have any trail projects right now. And then the last column there is the reimbursable amount that we can include in the reimbursement fee. We have a method for figuring out the cost of that later. So just focusing on the results, results there, if you're adding acre, parks and natural areas, that is a hundred percent eligible for inclusion in the SDC. Uh, based on this analysis, which by the way is a level of service analysis. And like, like John said, you can go into more detail, but just focusing on the results. Okay, so for the project list, we've broken it into two lists, the first being the infill list. So these add amenities park system without adding new acreage, acreages or miles of trail. Just adding new amenities to your existing park facilities. We assume that these are gonna be shared equally between existing and future residents, so they get fifteen point four two percent. That's that growth here we talked about. Uh, that's their eligibility. So a total eligible cost there of seven hundred and forty-seven thousand.
So why is Scott?
Sorry, yeah, so the, the, the detail is a little light, apologize, but that's, that's a planning effort, Scott. This doesn't give you a full description there, but it's for planning.
Well, I, I, I think even though we're in the process of developing that park, I think the discussion that we have. Still eligible project for up to. SDC, so.
So, and what, so Scott's on there, why not the other?
There, there would be, I think you're on the expansion list.
Yeah, this, this, this. This specific project cost six ninety-six thousand is not adding acres. And then, yes, so the second list is the expansion list. Uh, this adds acreage, you can see in the far right there. We have a total cost of thirty-eight million and obviously if it's a hundred percent eligible, that can be included, so thirty-eight million of eligible costs as well. And so the big, big projects here being North Clackamas Park at twenty-nine or twenty-three point one million. And also Milwaukee Bay Park at eleven point four. So those are really the big drivers of the SDC. I'm sorry.
Yeah. So I guess I'm not fully, um, and then what's the expansion?
Okay, yeah.
I mean, none of, I mean, we own them all. We own the property and all of them now. So nothing on that first list, this list are really different. I guess I don't understand.
Yeah, so the far right column here shows acreage added. Which may be acquisition, you're buying new acres. It could also be converting acres that you are using into usable park space. So projects on this list add acreage and projects on the previous list.
It, it, at developed park acreage, at least that's the way we understand those projects.
Well, I mean, some of these are completely undeveloped, some of them are partially developed, they're kind of mixed. So they're not all just. Completely nothing. Anyway.
Yeah, so we might want there the net increase in developed acres if those are different. If those are different numbers, but that, that's something we.
I think we tweaked some of those numbers already.
We've been through this quite a bit, but internally. Twenty-two acres, North Clackamas Park, that could be developed. It's a big park.
Yeah.
I'm surprised by that.
The north side is twenty-two acres, is that what that's saying? Or is that including the ball field?
I'd, we, I'd have to get it out specifically on that, on that, on that piece.
I mean, there is land also around the side of the Milwaukee Center and kind of behind. So there's stuff that, yeah, it is, I mean, it's. It sounds like some land, but I'm a little surprised by this.
Okay, so in summary, here is the full reimbursement fee cost basis. Expansion and infill combined makes thirty-eight point, uh, eight million really of reimbursement cost basis. And so then, uh, much briefer, we can talk about the reimbursement fee. Uh, at the top there, that top table is just a calculation of Milwaukee's investment. Today, per park acre, under nineteen thousand. We take that hundred nineteen thousand investment per unit, we apply it to the reimbursable amount that I showed you a couple of slides back. To get the total reimbursable cost there at the bottom far right column there, five hundred thousand. So really a small, small percentage of the total SDC. Then we make a, a brief, a quick adjustment here to the improvement fee cost basis. We're gonna remove the outstanding fund balance. Obviously, NCPRD has this fund balance right now. Uh, but this is, represents unfinished projects and on NCPRD's project list, if they're. Still have this fund balance in theory. And we don't want to double count for any projects that might have been on last list and are continuing into this list. So we remove the outstanding fund balance. And then we're finally back to the full calculation here. We talked about all those cost bases except for the compliance costs. By NCPRD in their, um, calculation is using five percent markup on the reimbursement. And improvement fees to represent the cost of complying statute, like calculating methodology. Admin, administration costs related to the SDC program. So we're just keeping with that same practice of adding five percent here to. Write some consistency. Then taking, so if you look at that twenty-six thousand dollar number for a single-family dwelling unit again. We've also provided a slide here showing what would happen if we scaled that similar to, um. I believe how your wastewater SDC is scaled, and this is based on west data, uh, occupancy by. Single-family house size, there you can see. So a. Between eighteen hundred and three thousand square feet, that represents the average one, uh, EDU. And then everything after that and below that has a different amount of EDUs based on, uh, again, west data. And so that's how we scale the charge for the single family. Also briefly, um, a couple of projects here that we can add in additional scenarios, Aquatic Center and the Skate Park. For twelve million, two million respectively. Since these are new facilities that, uh, represented elsewhere in the inventory. We're assigning them the fifteen point four two percent eligibility. So despite them being big projects, their actual impact combined is only two point two million on the SDC. Then on the bottom table, you can see what I just showed you, the original. And then those two middle rows are with just the skate park, with just the aquatic center, and then with both. So despite being great projects, they don't have a huge impact on the actual SDC. Then I'll hand it back over to John to talk about some, uh, comparisons.
So as you can imagine, um, and we are, we are seeing some eye-popping numbers as we. Uh, calculate park SDCs for a number of different agencies around the state. Few, many of those have been adopted at their fully. What we would call legally defensible maximum, right? But, you know, if the city were to do that, it would, any one of those options would be at the top of the. Of the list, at least of these known comparables. Sherwood just adopted theirs, uh, at almost fifteen thousand a couple of months ago. And I think. I think Lake Oswego's been in place for some time there, but. This just gives you an idea of what's going on. We're working with Wilsonville right now. And, uh. You know, everybody's needs and costs and growth expectations are different, so these are. You know, it's an apples and oranges comparison just by definition, but just again to give you an idea of, of, of. Where these would put the city if they were.
John, where are we in that stack?
Oh, uh, so you were, you were NCPRD zone one, second from the bottom. Zone one, yeah. Yeah, and there are. Not to, uh, uh, uh. Obviously. These, these decisions are entirely yours to make from this point on, but, um, one of the things that the home builders. Ask for is phasing, so, you know, if you were to. Decide to increase them to whatever number up to that calculated maximum, you could do that over a period of. Two years, three years, five years, um, as a way of getting to some point. If, if not the full, uh, the full amount.
And just to point out again, this is sort of that interim piece, you know, we. We did leave the district, we're gonna do a, a new. That would, you know, fully engage with. Together, uh, you know, a, a project list that perhaps is different than, than what we included. That, uh, you know, speaks to what the community has, what, what's desired. It doesn't necessarily reflect this older NCPRD. You know, capital plan. So, and those, that SD, that SDC would be recalculated.
And as, as Zach pointed out, North Clackamas Park is, is really. Swings the numbers a lot as you, because that's such a big price tag. Milwaukee Bay Park does as well to some extent, but. The, the rest of them in those price ranges don't have the same kind of impact as those two.
So, great point that. Airing apples and oranges here. But I do, I mean, I do think probably cities, city councils, you look a lot at. Right, comparatives. And I noticed it particularly strikes me that Happy Valley and Budstone are right there, switch other. Cause they're two very different communities, Happy Valley and Plodding Road. Uh, Budstone doesn't have much growth.
And Happy Valley is another one that they are reviewing their SDCs right now. Because they have that community center that they're considering, so. I think it's likely that that chart will change significantly. This is a lot of information. Uh, Ken, I'm gonna ask you to step back, Peter, but. Was this based upon a North Clackamas County? Capital program?
It was.
Okay, so. Would you describe it as a rich wish list or, or reasonable? I, I, no, because there's a lot of stuff there.
Well, I, I, I think it's a, a pretty rich. Wish list because a lot of the, you know, a lot of what they have on there, they haven't constructed yet, right?
Yeah.
Cause they don't have the, the funding to do it. But I think it's, you know, when they had gone through their process to develop that list, I think that. Did they, I think they had done some systems planning or a master, a master plan that they had put together. Now, I don't know if those ever formally adopted. But they had gone through and, and put, put a document together that captured the, you know, the desires of the district were. Uh, and there are certainly some big projects on it. You know, Milwaukee has. You know, about seventeen parks, right? We've got, we've got the bulk of the parks and there's a lot of those. Projects, Milwaukee Bay Park and North Clackamas Park. Those are really, what, forty thousand, four, forty million dollars or? There was thirty million dollars for the board?
Yeah.
Just out of. Yeah, just out of those, with those two projects that. Really are, uh, that's part of that numerator, right? So we've got a bigger numerator and a smaller denominator, and that makes that number a lot, a lot bigger.
Well, I, I guess, you know, sorry if I'm beat this horse here, I. You know, North Clackamas Parks District wasn't gonna achieve this either with their. With their financial situation as it is or even maybe projected. I mean, right? I mean, this looks like a lot of, you know, a lot of big projects are very expensive. And, and whether we're in or out, I. This is a. This would, this, this would be a big bite to take by them or us. Some of it, if, if I may.
Go ahead.
Some of it has to do with location in service area. If, if. That list plus everything else that was being, was planned in the district. It gets diluted when you divide it by growth throughout the district service area, because there's a lot more growth. Likely to occur outside the city of Milwaukee, right? When you take the projects that are planned in the city of Milwaukee. Now you've got the big, big numerator, smaller denominator issue. And that, it, it kind of gets blended in when you look at it, uh, district wide, so. Oddly, when you, just the draft. District-wide SDCs were substantially lower and it's just because the numerator is so much bigger.
And I, you know, and I, I think, you know. Be- because it was an interim methodology, you know, we, we chose to use. Developed capital program that NCPRD.
Yeah.
And, you know, knowing, uh, you know, actually, I, I, I'll share when I saw the number, I was, I was surprised. I thought it would be. Flipped the other way. You know, I was worried that we would have a much smaller SDC, not realizing. You know, how, how, how this, how it gets all calculated out here. But, you know, the, the point is this is, it's an interim one. You know, we're setting up what we can, what that maximum defensible charge could be. But it doesn't necessarily need to be charged at that rate, right?
I have a question, so. With all the stuff that we have going on here in Milwaukee with the projects that NCPRD had planned. Were they timing on, seeing that SDCs from like Monroe and Hillside? Is that part of their calculation on their projects?
Is it NCPRD's? Yeah, so when we were looking at funding Milwaukee Bay Park, we had made assumption that. Seattle grew prior to the start of that project. That those funds, the SDCs from those funds would be used in the project. Staff went through negotiations for a solid year to figure out how to fund Milwaukee Bay Park with the staff at NCPRD. Where we landed is that our SDCs were more flexible than the grant dollars they could receive for Metro. It made more sense for them to invest Metro grant dollars to this project and to move the SDCs to another project. Because of where the funds would be used. So the Metro funds were dedicated to green space, whereas our SDC could be used generally in recreation. So we had originally a good council, but. We're fine with you using our SDC in this way and transferring them to another project. We retracted that, I think like in November-ish, maybe September, somewhere this past fall, because we were seeing that we weren't going. This council was concerned, we're going to get those grant dollars and what was to happen, it's just everything was gonna get taken out of the city. So, um, yes.
Yes. And I'm not asking you to. And, and Peter might know the answer, or you may know the answer, sitting on the DAC. If they don't, I'm not asking you to divulge any confidence from your relationship with NCPRD, but. What is the SDC level there?
Oh, they're not that far along. They're, 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 you, you know, this, there's, um. Trying to bring together a complete and updated. Project list and we've been the beneficiaries of what they have so far, but they're not, they're not all the way. They paused their work.
Yes, they paused their work.
Yes.
And I know that, you know. They have had. And, you know, like we see there's one, two, three, they've had it once. And there's some interest there.
And there's some interest there and in rhythm. South of the Norman area to enough.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um. Other question?
These numbers are huge. The the reality is like, and then, I think at least for me, it's like. The numbers are huge, that's all.
But, you know, council has the flexibility to set a lower rate.
But this opportunity to have in order to get there.
Well, that's what we need to have. That's what we've calculated needed based on. This interim master plan, the the interim capital program. So, you know, we might go through this master planning effort, we leave the park district and. Community could come back and say, you know what, we're we're happy with the way North Clackamas Park is, right? We don't need to. We don't need to include that project in our capital, right? So. We could have additional expenses though, right? It's other expenses that could throw, so.
Man, do you think that would be high? But still, uh, scale that changes.
So do we know for sure that they're gonna have a. A new district on the ballot? Is that still like?
Uh, well, they can they haven't made their mind up. It hasn't been voted by the by the county commissioner. Um, we have heard that it is likely, but I think that they were waiting to see what we decided to do. If this council doesn't decide on what they want to do, I don't know if that pushes off any action.
So they're waiting on us.
They may be. Uh, on the S D Cs, I can guarantee they're waiting on us. So what happened is they restarted that front with after Happy Valley left. Because so much broke last their S D C calculation that they had to recalculate. Um, so that is definitely unfully telling.
Because of a lot of what they're they're. All these acronyms, S D students. It's M A B. It's lost my greatest thought. I lost my train.
Oh. Very equivalent to the P S.
Well.
Were you asking about the board doing something versus the P S?
No, yeah, the.
Or death.
They're waiting on us to make a decision for their S D C.
Well, to continue their process on S D.
Oh, so my thing was, that's what it's. There's there's an opportunity for more development in Milwaukee than there are in the other states.
Not necessarily. Like areas outside of Happy Valley, we are still a part of the district, those continuing seats with San Antonio Road. Um, and there's a lot of land maps, right? So we're twenty percent. There's a lot of land maps that are espoused over the county, and. They have the ability to do development there as well. I think the city has seen a substantial amount of higher depth of development.
That's all of our prepared to be.
And I think I I think with the S D C. The next steps with that would be based on, you know, what we did, what the council decides on. Moving forward with. You know, a letting. And and at that point, we would come back at some point with some. Uh, more refined recommendation, maybe maybe tweak tweak a couple of things and make make sure that we've answered some of this, some of these questions that have popped up. And then we go through a ninety day. Window. And we have public noticing effort that we'd have to do and then adopt something, but we don't need to have an S D C adopted. That that date. District, so we have certainly time to do this.
So the ninety day window for public comment, we need to have a.
Right.
So, well, you could, uh. You have to provide ninety days notice before the public hearing to adopt the methodology. That would support, you know, and and there'd be maybe some refinements, but essentially the methodology would support that maximum number. At the time of adoption, you could decide to implement it. Uh di- differently, and that would not require a new notice period. You don't have to have the phasing decided until adoption.
Okay.
Because that's not really part of the methodology, if that that exists.
So I mean, I, okay, that's interesting, but take long gives you that. Practical matter. We put that number out there, we're only really thinking. Half or a third of that number.
Right.
Then we're just inviting a lot of spending out there in a lot of. How how many of the current S U S D Cs? Hold my trip, phrase this right, uh, of the S C S C that uh have not like. Those fees that we're needing to collect upon the uh certificate of occupancy, how many of those will? Age up? Like, how many of those will be collected by the time we decide we're no. Wondering like how much of that? When are you gonna decide when you're? Uh, because that's really a good question. We've got have a number of developments right now where we're collecting an occupancy, and I would say there's. Maybe thirty units that are like that right now. Uh, we have, uh, we have a bunch that have land use that haven't pulled their permits yet. Those would be the next set. Um, and it's just hard, it's all timing. We we're not recommending that we adopt that S D C till you all have decided to leave. Out of ballot measure cap, right? Like you got through those sets, I think you're still at least. A year, maybe at least six months from adopting any sort of changed S D C rate.
Would you would you repeat those steps one more time?
Yeah, so um. Continuity rate, as we have it today, Dan. That S D C rate applies to about eight hundred minutes. That we have out there where we've already permitted it, we're going to have occupancy permit coming in, those will get approved. Those will get done paid out before we get through this problem. You then have, I can tell you the list, but it's uh.
Hillside.
Hillside will be.
A lot of interest.
Uh, I think you may have some at um Waverly, but I I honestly can't.
Waverly, the, yeah, I mean, I I I Steve, I Steve's most the the most optimistic uh. Projection that that Steve had put together, I I think forecasted about. Four and a half million dollars over sort of that six year, over a six year window. Starting in twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, going out to twenty, yeah.
I think it was twenty-one, twenty-two.
Twenty-one, twenty-two.
And you know, we had a million in hand, so the proposal was that we used, we were gonna get five and a half million dollars to roll this off. At the at the whole rate.
I was really asking for those, I think you had three steps. Not, I wasn't talking about the S D C amounts.
Okay, for the three steps, you mean when we would do a question?
No.
Okay.
When uh.
Decided we're going. Oh, so your first question, you said you would need to have a ballot measure that was. We would have had to negotiate a leaving. It would have to be on schedule, we would have submitted the paperwork for the new boundary adjustments to the assessor, the uh the assessor job. And then it would be before you, I guess, let's say it's July one, twenty twenty-four. It would be before you, we had talked about April of twenty twenty-four to ask for you to approve the temporary. Or the interim S D C rates, so that when we hit July one, you'd collect that rates. Until we were able to go through the planning process to set a new rate eighteen months or two years later.
So the ballot measure is only only says stay or go.
It's actually only says, will you will you give money to the city of Milwaukee to run park services? This council, we believe, has the ability to vote.
Say that again?
So the reason we're in court right now. Is for the court, we believe that under the statute that's outlined in our in our uh contracts. That you all vote, whether or not you stay or you leave the district. You would have to do a public meeting, and then you would vote, and then you'd be done. The issue is we can't take the funding with us. So the decision by council was, let's place the decision about taking money to us instead of having it directed to N C P R D. And then make a vote to stay or to leave, so that we actually know we have a funding source to pay for the park service.
Okay.
I have a question. Uh, these S D Cs, these amounts. Are we not concerned about what that would do to future development in terms of killing future development?
Well, I I I think, yeah, that that that's absolutely because I'm concerned at that at that amount, what that would do to development, yeah.
Talk about, we're talking about affordable housing, developing affordable housing, talk about. Uh, just inclusionary zoning, that was a big concern, even with direct stabilization at the day of the capital, it's like, oh, we want to kill development. But I, but for this, we're willing to.
Well.
It's not, not saying.
I I don't, I don't know. I'm just saying that, like, I'm just, I'm just talking it out loud, like. Like what council president gave us, that's a similar number.
Well, that would be.
Consider about that killing the vote.
Well, that would be with the maximum defensible.
But we would have.
Well, you could adjust it down to what this is just an interim.
If we adjust it down, then we still have to make up the rest of some other source.
It's those projects.
The way it's double instructed during the interim period.
I hear what you're saying, but um we also don't necessarily win it. We wouldn't also have to do. North Clackamas Park, right, at twenty-two acres. Um, which is, which is taken from what they put down. Uh, their books, so we got very.
Their list.
So that doesn't necessarily mean we're gonna take what I have.
Okay, do you just want to add that as we've talked about parks of the last fifty years, that I think, you know. The the place where you get the most interest from the community is because they feel like N C P R D is not providing that service.
Right.
It doesn't have an affinity around that. So I think that the people who have been frustrated are looking for you to build more of this stuff. Not less, and so I just want to make sure everybody's really, we're honest about the fact that saying, well, we just won't worry about this. The community will come to an expected different amount. Not everyone, but.
Well, and I think that's why having. The N C P R D, I was. There, so it was like twenty years ago. And it is.
So. And you're you're not compelled to use that list either. You can make. Additions or deletions to that list now, but you could do that before before adoption.
Hmm.
Peter, you also asked how many acres, I believe, that that was about, North Clackamas Park is forty-three acres. What we had in the year was twenty-two acres, so it would be a portion of the government, it is not. Um, I do just want to sort of summarize, we're at seven thirty-five. Uh, and we do need some guidance from council. It's not about tonight, we're in a study session, but I do think. Peter and I would appreciate just some next steps. What do you want us to do from this stage? Because this was the last piece we needed to to present for you all to give us some additional provisions.
You know, in my mind, the question is pretty clear. It's can we go? For higher, I mean, I guess, three things. Can we go for a higher rate than N C P R D's? N C P R D's currently going. To me, it's hard to do. Can we negotiate something with them to? Get them to continue running the Milwaukee, some some scenario where they continue running the Milwaukee Center. Potentially North Clackamas Park, and that comes out of the calculation. Um. Either way, with either of those things, I don't think we're ready. It's hard for me to see us ready. Much as it pains me to say that, um. And, I mean, we know that they are looking at raising their rate, and so if we went out, if they go out. For reconfiguration and raising the rate, and we then ask for the same rate. Right, I mean, that's that's the best of all possible. Um. But there's nothing that makes them. Remember, right?
Yeah, still, who's gonna blink? So, yeah, I guess to me, I. Don't we really have to understand the the court decision before we make a decision?
Well, so the court decision is how you get out. So do you leave under a vote of the council, or do you leave under a different facts? The discussion we've heard is that there are other ways for you to get out if that court case fails. So there's two, right? One is that you can get out when they come to you and ask you want to be in the new district. The second is, I think that's a part of the negotiation with the county about leaving. If you all want to leave under the other part of statute where they can just apply each.
And a couple of county commissioners have indicated to me, we want to go. So. You know, whether that commerces, I guess, we'll vote for. So, I mean, that was how I read that.
The reason that we originally went to court was because we didn't have those options. Because the county didn't want us to leave under that option, and we were going to renegotiate our I G A. And in renegotiating the our the I G A, we had been told that it was going to be excluded from the county, or actually, data. That excluded that withdrawal information from the version. And so that's why we started that process. I've spoken with the city attorney. He thinks we should finish that process. He thinks that we should, we're close, and we've done most of the work. At this point, we should give the answer. Um, but there are other solutions if it pains. I'm not saying you shouldn't wait, and I'm great with you waiting. But that you do have other choices.
I mean, the downside of waiting, of course, is. They don't. Nothing makes them act, so we don't know when they'll ask. It also means they potentially lose some of the. Milwaukee Bay Park is under construction next year, because I understand that some of the grants are up, they. Might be things where the state agency will give an extension. I think we don't know, but we might lose some of the.
Yeah, inflation is so real. I think all those things are real facts.
I I agree with you. I don't think that we can have a ballot by the day. Uh, the more I hear, the more I'm. You know, leaning towards waiting to see. Their ballot that they asked for, and you know, even thinking about. Uh. Giving them control of our parks. And having them be responsible for taking care, like, if they have them, they have to take care of them. Will they? Well, it that remains to be seen, right?
Are you talking about giving them ownership of the land?
Yeah, like, well, give it four bucks, right? I think that's that's what I'm shocked about it, just that. Um. I don't. I also. I hear what you say about social services, but. Inflation's real, taking food out of people's mouths. That, I mean, yeah, we we could push that on the county, but who the county can also be, make us look like. We're the bad guys, right? And that's, you gotta worry about perception. I mean, and that's real, like, people, you know, I'm not a politician, I am, but. I mean, people can spin stuff, right? And they could be like, look, they took two hundred meals away from people.
Well, I think, I mean, I think that was easy for us. I mean, you have to get out ahead of it. That's them. They're the ones who are who are saying, hey, you take it, take it. You know, they know it doesn't, it doesn't serve.
Yeah, I I I it's just optics, optics, so. You know. You know. I also, like, let, let NCPRD ask for more money. They can, you know, see what they do with their new districts. The factors are out, or if they see that it's, it's not gonna pass, and then. I mean, I, I, like, inflation's real, and raising people's bills is real, and we saw that cost burden stuff. And that's fifty percent of the walk-throughs are cost burden. And. Living paycheck to paycheck is hard. So I, 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 I struggle, struggle asking folks to like. You know, to make that sacrifice, when, you know, there are other options. I really don't. They, they put us. Maybe we did it to ourselves too. I just wish they would have moved the damn park. I mean, that's really what it boils down to, if they would have just done. Anyway, I'm gonna stop talking, that's, that's where I'm.
Yeah, we wouldn't be here. I mean, I think that would be. Even without that.
But even if they had broken.
Well, you know, I, I think that we're, we're challenged by the ballot, yeah, as well, but uh. I, I, it would surprise me if. County just pushes this idea of the ballot any further out.
Yeah.
There's, there's no guarantee that they're gonna do this in November.
There's no guarantee, I mean, they do have their own, I mean, there's. They're seeing their own budgetary woes, of course, their headquarters, their beloved headquarters. Um, so, I mean, they want. They want the more money and they definitely want their SDCs, right?
Can I answer just one quick question? I did wanna, for our, if you all wanna head out, if there are no questions about that SDC, I just wanna let them go. Any other SDC question? If you all wanna head out.
I, I have one question before you go, so. If, if, if we do nothing else, are we in NCPRD zone right, zone one right now?
Yes.
Okay, so, okay, that's what I thought, just wanted confirmation.
We are, they're talking about getting rid of the zones and they're doing. Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely, so going back to the other direction. So right now, what I'm hearing generally is, don't vote a ballot.
For, for when?
For May, okay. Well, well. I don't feel like there's anything really pressure. Need to, to act, they're, they're, I mean, we said they're waiting for us. I think they're just watching this process, I don't think that they're feeling. Uh, you know, I think that they're observing conversation that we're having. They're paying attention to the analysis, particularly. I think if anything, they're motivated to adjust the SDC formula, which if we don't do anything. You know, sets them up to benefit from development in Milwaukee. You know, I mean, if, if they don't, if they don't go for, for a, you know, any type of change for, um, a park system. They just adjust, we don't. So I feel like we have a moment of momentum. Um, and a window of opportunity where things are out in the air, and there is never going to be, you know, the full. Known quantity, but. I mean, I would like to be able to look at some, like, a slightly different formula. Like, maybe, maybe somewhere in the middle or something, what that would do to, um, to the projections that. Peter has put together. Um. Because I think, yeah, these are really big numbers, um.
Well, so, just to be clear though, nothing about the vote on November. Makes us, I mean, that's still a discussion that we can have, as an M L.
So, but if we were, if we decide to remove ourselves from the Parks District, then we have to decide on, you know. On what our SDC rate would be, uh, and there's no, I mean, there's rumblings of the county going. They might not, they might just skip that, we don't do anything, and go straight to an SDC. I feel like. Good services, good parks and recreation services, and I know that there's a lot that. The whole concept of taking over the community center is fraught, right, like. Really, the county should be providing those services, will they? I don't know. The fact that they've been backfilling that with, you know, Parks District General Fund to the tune of, you know, seven hundred thousand dollars, that's ridiculous. So, you know, like, do we wanna inherit that? Do we wanna negotiate parts of that? It's, it's like. Hot potato, I agree, um, you know, that. The value that we might receive by cutting the county portion of meals that go out the door, I don't think that that value. Outweighs some of these other elements, you know, an increase in possible SDC rates, but like, you know. Couple hundred bucks per unit that might cover what we'd be, I, I feel like people. There are a lot of people in the district and outside of the district who come to Milwaukee for all kinds of things. And if a meal is why they're coming to Milwaukee, then let's, let's. So I know I'm throwing a lot out there, I'm just saying, um, I don't personally feel that I'm ready to. Take the, the idea of a ballot picture off the table.
Or May.
It's a lot of work, but also, like, I mean. Think about like.
Peter, a question. How many cities our size have parks?
It's on the list, honestly, that would probably be the list.
Canby, Gladstone, both a little bit nuts.
Canby, Oregon City is a little bigger. Happy Valley is smaller, Tegard. Right, so, I mean, it's a decent number of your cities. Yeah, no, I mean, I think that's really helpful, right, like, I mean, the city aggression doesn't have a Parks Recreation. Or, I mean, they have, like, they have a team of a couple of people, right, they don't have a district, they don't have a district. And, but, I mean, there are a lot of things that we do that other cities our size are bigger, don't get to, and, you know, I mean, I get that, I understand.
So let's talk about the, you brought up risk of the SDC formula, so. Yes, say, you don't go with May. Still thinking about going in November. They decide to drag their feet longer about going for an increase, which I think is very. Totally foreseeable potential, but. Do they take the SDC question off of pause, or do they wait till November? And if they take it off pause, it sounds like they still have quite a bit of work to do. Then they have to give us a ninety-day notice, we can, I mean, that's the point where we can. Uh. You know, threaten legal action or whatever to protect our SDCs, right?
I think we have SDCs. I mean, I think that they'd be hard pressed for the statute, they have to give. The issue you run into is, are the grants still there? What money's gone away? Right, I think that it just, the, the project becomes. Tenuous. Um, I do also just wanna talk briefly about something I'm hearing from all of you. Which continues to be that this city council wants to have decision-making authority in parks. And the only way that we can have decision-making authority is for you all to take over parks in many ways, right? So the SDC discussion, we're concerned about the size of these SDCs. When they do their SDC discussion, uh, and CPRD, they do not need your. So I just wanna make sure that when we're talking about this, we're also weighing out, how okay are you? With NCPRD taking this on, and, and if you're okay with it. More than you're not okay with it, then how do we make sure there's the highest likelihood they're gonna be successful? That's all I'm saying is, I just want good parks. Right, so if we're in charge, great, if they're in charge, great, I'm gonna just keep coming back to, how do we get the best parks for the city? And there's a lot of chess moves in here that we're talking about, um, but that's sort of the bigger picture that I'm just watching as we're talking. I mean, we also, we're not able to really count too much for. This parks is, is for the time being, so, council, but we have to decide on, we have to actually decide on our council polls, so. We're not going, if we're not going out for a vote, then is it still? I mean, I don't think it's, it's not feasible other ways, right? Then we have to have a precision.
Well, I'm certainly not saying we're not going out, but I'm just saying.
I, I don't, I don't see us doing it in May, and, and the main reason is because. Last year, when this was discussed. We've, okay, so with the outreach we've done, at one time all we've done, we've told everyone fifty percent. Yes, the main reason that I even got on council, I went for that was because of the community. We were nearly doubling in our, and we haven't told. Anyone, other than people who attend these meetings and watch, and. With how things are right now, that's gonna be an increase of what Peter and I lost extra. And I get that NCPRD might do the same thing, but let them be the, let them be the one to increase the cost of living. I'm not comfortable with, with asking for a dollar between now and May, or even increasing. You know, cost of living on that, for that matter, um, and I don't wanna ask. I don't wanna leave the district and then we caught, we don't get the funding, so we're screwed, so we don't have any move.
Well.
No, just, I mean, that's not where I, the, the issue that I said. We, I don't think. With all the outreach we've done at this point is at fifty percent, going back when we took power, I'm not comfortable. I wasn't comfortable with increasing it in the beginning, because we had three options last year, we had eighty-nine cents, but we had, I think. Eighty-nine dollars. The issue with increasing that we heard from. Councilors at the time, said, we're gonna increase it without even telling people what to get, right, so. That was the issue that I had, I was like, my, my position was, let's stay at the fifty-four until we know what people. Now we're doing it at a dollar because we just can't even keep it at fifty. So I just don't like the fact that it's changed with very little public notice, by the time we decide on it, we're only gonna give them. Two, three months to. To reach out and get, voice their opinion on the matter, just don't think now is the time to be raising. You know, cause you got that, you got the, our, our department levy at twelve dollars, there's twenty plus. Plus potential liability that we have to discuss, only two dollars. It's just, when you compound it, it's, I think it's.
I will say, I mean, I don't ultimately think a dollar is unreasonable, but I do agree with the point that. We were saying, share a long fifty percent. Um, we haven't changed that narrative. They are gonna get hit by the fire district in May. Um, maybe, I mean, November will come and there won't be anything else. Ballot, but who knows, um. Yeah, I think just, I just feel like, um. For us, and, and I will say, from having sat at the D A C meeting last week, that. It's clear that they, um, they're in their budget process. They are discussing where they have short calls and what their needs are, and it may become clear as. You know, how much they need to also. So I mean, all of that narrative may be easier to roll out in the fall. Even if they don't go.
The real thing is the other one. You know, we don't trust the county handling our parks, we're gonna trust them to two hundred people. To figure it out, like, we can't just tell them, county figured it out, they tried to figure out a lot of stuff.
Well, I, I, I would say in all fairness, though, that they are providing meals right now, doing, they're just doing, you know, I, I, I think.
That's because they're running the Milwaukee. They don't, right, we're gonna have to run that ourselves, us saying, hey, county, you deal with that, they already don't wanna deal with. What if the county says, you know what, no, just like council president, he was just saying, hey, this is Milwaukee's problem, they own that century, they don't want to dump. Two hundred people. It's just, why would we even put two hundred people in January? Cause it might not be like, you know, Milwaukee Bay Park has been fifteen years, they ain't done anything. Who's gonna have that, you know, even a day to wait for it? They go a day without their food because of whatever the issue is, trying to figure out negotiations. And we're playing with people's lives, that's.
I, but just, I do, um, really wanna respect what you're saying. I don't think that you are.
Right, right.
But we've also highlighted that that's just one of many negotiation pieces with the county. And that in a, in a better scenario where we are cost-sharing resource, the county should be.
So I, I feel like, I feel like we're more on the pa, on the same page there than we are on. When to move the ballot measure forward, and I feel like. In terms of outreach, I also really respect in here what everyone is saying about the public input. Process that was run and the, and the rate that was, you know, I absolutely believe that we need to be talking. About, uh, you know, an increase in that, because they, they entered into a conversation with one thing. Just like, just like we all did, right, and now we have all this information. Uh, and all these variables have changed, and we're trying to do the best that we can with all that new information, we should give. The residents of Milwaukee the benefit of that as well, so. But the piece that concerns me there, and it goes back to parks as a goal, council. Is that if we are thinking about pushing off until November, then. We absolutely have to keep this as a goal, because there will be staff time that goes into that outreach process. But when it comes down to the actual vote, then it's us.
Yeah.
Then we, I mean, I know that, that, I know you all know that, but it's like, you know, we're gonna have to take over the public involvement process and. And run those meetings and talk with people and knock on the doors and all of that, so, um. I think, you know, it's, I don't know, but we haven't, we haven't had that conversation, and we didn't get to it at the retreat. So, um.
But I'm, I'm all on board on keeping it as a goal. To get, you know, to get through May, right, to get to November to see what happens, right, so. I'm cool with, like, like I said, keeping parks as a goal, because we have to get somewhere at some point, and it is gonna take a lot of staff time. To figure out, like, you know, uh, John and. I mean, they aren't cheap, right? You know, and so. I mean, I, I wanna be respectful, sorry, do, do you have direction for us?
I don't, I, I do wanna just, a couple of things, so if you all wanted to lay, so we're not gonna bring anything next week, that's fine. Um, I actually also, when I asked for direction for what staff is doing, I meant that authentically. I don't have, there's no next steps for us, so we've delivered the SDC report, the recreation report, we did all the community engagement, we wrote the. Op-eds, like, we've done all the things, so part of this to me is actually us asking. Yes, it's a goal, but what, what are we doing? Because otherwise, Peter and I are sort of in a stasis as well, we're just, we're waiting. And I guess I'm asking for what are those threshold points that we're waiting for, so we know what, what we can act on. We don't have to decide that tonight, if this is a council goal, then we can come back and have that discussion at another meeting. But right now, Peter and I don't have other work to do.
Well, I mean, so, like, a decision on the ballot being, probably. Is that something, you know, something like, say, skip May and vote in November, that.
Well, there's.
Either one of those, would that be? Either one of those, would that be more of a direction to give us all?
The May one is off now. What I'm hearing is that would have to be next week. So that one's not happening. So what I'm hearing is November. And if it's in November, we can bring back the ballot measure at that point, but we don't have any, there's no engagement plan for me. Stuff like that.
I do think there's no reason we, as counselors, can't start going to the NDA meetings, maybe even having another town hall to talk about why it's not fifty, why we're not going yet, but why it's not fifty-four cents. Not gonna be enough. And just start getting that message out there, even though we're not, you know, on a ballot. There's no reason we have to wait to be on a ballot to start having these conversations. Um, and then, you know, yeah, we can discuss what, how we wanna approach. Are there things we wanna try to approach and do in negotiation?
And what I, I guess, and that works, that's where you all wanna go. I am currently hearing two people saying like they don't wanna support a dollar, period. So, right, right, right now I'm hearing councillor Casar Body and council president saying, I'm not sure I wanna do this. I, I know where I believe you are, councillor, and I believe I know where you are mayor, but I actually don't know where you are, councillor.
But I'm open, uh, unless, that's a Washington answer. But, uh, I'm open to, you know, something above fifty-four cents. Um, but not without community engagement.
So if that's the case, um, then what I would recommend is that A, we need a vote that says this is council goal. B, we need the, for Peter to come in, um, with me, probably sometime in March. We need to talk about what our engagement plan would be, what the strategy would be, what role you all would play versus us. I've also heard some interest from council about going and negotiating and having some of these discussions. I think that those are absolutely within your wheelhouse. Um, if you all wanna take a leadership role on that, then Peter and I take a backseat. We're happy to be in the room and we're happy to be there to help you prepare and to facilitate. But when a councillor is present, we're gonna defer to you to be the negotiator on something like this. So just be prepared that that's also how we run that process. Um, I haven't spoken with the county about their interest in having those types of conversations. Um, but we would need some understanding from you all, what your general agreement was that you were all in discussion.
So I, I'm interested in putting together an action plan with a November, with a November. Um, and, and that should include public engagement. And I think absolutely we should make a decision based on what community members are targeting. So I think that's, I mean, for me, that's, that's core value in this. But I do think that we need a plan that delineates the elements that, um, that city staff are working on to move us toward that. And the pieces that we have signed on to be a part of to move this forward as a, as. Because then, not only we're doing a part to move that goal forward, but it's also really clear who's having conversations with them. And that we're, we're in conversation each other in work sessions about how those discussions are going. If, um, I think it has to be a strategic direction toward November.
Can I get a little more clarity if we're seeing November? So if the county does not place this on the ballot, does that change? Does not place it on the ballot, does not place the new district in November? I'm just trying to make sure there's something different at that point.
I think there are, I think there are two paths.
Okay.
And so I think if, um, uh, we're, if we're marching toward a, uh, November ballot, uh, I think that that would certainly be the case if the county was not going to validate anything.
Yes.
If the county is going to ballot something, I think that calls our own November, uh, uh, ballot measure into question about whether we should do that or wait until the county's ballot is completed.
What was the first question?
Well, we have to opt in or out.
There's risk in this. That's why I'm asking the question, is if we, do you mind if I answer this?
Yeah, I'm okay.
So if we, um, wait till November and they're on the ballot, they're going to come to you and ask, do you want in or out of the district? You'll know their new rating, but you're going to have to make a call without knowing whether or not you have a funding source to fund parks. And you run a risk that the ballot measure, if you decided to opt out of the new district and to run a separate ballot measure, that that ballot measure fails. And at that point, I'm gonna be real honest, I have no money to run a parks department. So I just wanna make sure that that's also clear, that, that this is a riskier move. The reason staff has pushed for this ballot has been because we're concerned about not having sufficient revenue to pay for the resources.
Well, isn't there another risk that we have competing ballot measures that's just gonna confuse voters?
Absolutely. Well, they wouldn't have the same ballot measure on November. But the publications of data will be confusing to the.
I guess I see the risk of failing now as a bigger risk than that risk, and so that's a risk, um. I think the risk of failing has to be. Without, you know, the only two and a half months to get that message out there is a bigger risk in my mind. I guess, yeah. I also think, um.
I'm just making sure people know the risk.
Oh, I do think the other part of the risk is frankly, that they come in under a doll, they come in at eighty, sorry, thirty-five cents. And, um.
Well, and if they do, we're also going to be back here probably saying, unless you negotiate in different circumstance, the city should not be taking on this kind of liability. Just because we can't provide the service at eighty minutes, that's, that is very, very, if we are continuing to provide the human services component. Okay, so what I'm hearing is, nothing for this one. Peter and I are back in March or April. You all are going to talk about this as a goal at some point. Once that is on the, on the approval, Peter and I come forward and we say, this is what we would recommend for the engagement plan. Honestly, it's a repeat, probably of your last engagement plan. Um, I don't have support, I don't have a consultant anymore, we've exhausted those funds. So we're gonna have to have that discussion as well. Um, but we can, we can present that to you all, March or April, and then you would need to be decided by August eighth.
Well, and we need.
What would the, what would the goal be?
Uh, that we're going to continue to work on parks. No, the goal is trying to determine the perks.
The goal would be to, be to.
No, and I think when you and I spoke councillor, one of the options was you all could decide not to proceed. And that still requires a lot of unpacking from what we've done over the last year. There's a lot of work that's gonna go into this, no matter what you all decide on the ballot. And it's going to cost money and time per step. So my ask is, once you all vote on this as a goal, it stays as we go through this process, whichever direction you go, and so we have come to.
And I guess, I mean, inherent in there, there's the outreach plan, there's also the, um, when and how to engage with the kid.
There is, I mean, out of this, I'm going to go text Gerishman, I'm gonna ask for breakfast. We're gonna have a discussion about how he would wanna proceed. So this is a joint effort, right? This is a relationship, they get to come to the table where they want to. So I'm gonna walk him through what we've said here tonight, just all public, and see how he would like to proceed in this space. Um, I am going to recommend that we not post a public meeting on March sixteenth, until we have more clarity from council. Because we're gonna pull that off of the March agenda. And we will, it'll be a part of our engagement strategy at that point, we'll have a. We were, we had been requested at the previous public hearings to have another public meeting around the recreation plan. So we had it scheduled, uh, for March sixteenth. We're not there anymore, so.
Listen to the town hall.
Yeah. So that's now, that's now possible, we can come up with.
Is there a mailing list of interested partners that we can send an update to, to, like, rather than just ghost?
I don't like ghosts. I don't like ghosts. A couple of people, we do have a sign-in sheet from that, I don't believe, so we can go back. I think we do. I know that we had a couple of people reach out, I know. So for those individuals, we can at least get it out as far.
So I heard a lot, like, talking about goals.
Yep.
So can we put that on an upcoming agenda so we can talk about that?
Yes. So do you want me to put, I can put it on the twenty-first, or I can put it on the March seventh? Um, if you just wanna talk about it, then we can do that probably this next week. And then bring something forward at a future meeting if you all wanna actually.
If you wanna talk about it.
I think we have a lot on.
We're, we're, we have a lot on offer next month. Like, this is a, we're, we're going to go right into work. So I, I, just knowing how much time we spent tonight, my recommendation is that we spend half an hour just discussing. It's really you all, it's not a dialogue with me, it's what you want for this. There was no hope, just a discussion. Then we bring it back on the March seventh meeting for another thirty minutes with a possible vote. Uh, just so everybody here knows, the council brings the resolution, so you would draft it, whatever it says. Okay? Give you one a lot more time, if you really feel like we need more capacity. We have study sessions coming up. Um, but really, the timing isn't great for waiting for one of those, because the next one I really had a win was like May. Uh, and I don't think you can wait till May, and I think you're gonna lose some things if we pull items off. We just have a number of votes, packages coming up, so.
Also, I guess, I mean, I was one of the people who wasn't ready at the retreat and the goal of the vote. Now, although I predict, I had said, we should keep our same three goals, which is where we landed. Um, now that we've got clarity on, um, how the segment is happening for Sam and, and everybody seems to feel pretty comfortable, I'm okay. So I don't know what we need to. Well, I wasn't the only person who.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm, I'm there as well.
Yeah, my big concern was keeping the momentum of the staff time that's already committed to these goals without interruption of those. A- as we're keeping on the boards. Yeah, I'm good.
So then what I'm hearing is that we could bring a resolution forward to keep this same three goals, then?
As far as I can, but.
At the next meeting?
Yes.
Yes, I, I, I'm, I'm okay with that too, after talking to city manager over about timelines, um, I'm comfortable with that.
Um, and so, and, and we did actually come up with some dates, so I just wanna be really honest about what those are to make sure that everybody is prepared for what I would recommend going into, um, that document. Let me get it for you, one second. Uh, so the first one is, sure, I deleted it. Uh, the first one is that the, the park school would need to be, no matter what, a park school through, I must say, honestly, at this point, January twenty twenty-five. And I'm saying that only because by doing this ballot measure now in November, we're gonna miss the March date for starting the perks department in twenty-five. You're that, no, twenty-four. So you're then looking at twenty-five, July one twenty-five for the parks, if you go down that path. Now, if you don't go down that path, I think you're in negotiations after the, after November for at least a year to figure out what the parks department is. So that would be November of twenty twenty-five, twenty-four, twenty-four. Yeah. So I'm gonna write that down, just so that everybody has it in their inboxes. If you have questions, you can write back.
Wait, say that again.
So if we went on the ballot for May, then I could be submitting the paperwork for the new boundary of the new department in March of twenty-four. And we would be able to leave in July one twenty twenty-four. By doing this now in November, if you do it, we don't have sufficient time to go from, from November to March. There's too much work that has to happen in that legroom to be able to leave the district on July one twenty twenty-four. The next opportunity is July one twenty twenty-five. So this date just pushes you back to being able to leave the district.
If it fails.
If it fails, what I'm saying is, but then you have to start negotiating. And honestly, in November, if they put a ballot on the same time and you have failed, you're at least another year, because you're probably having to go back out for another ballot measure, because we don't have any parks funding at that. And we're going to have to probably spend a lot more money to do that work. I just, I don't think if you wait until, unless their ballot measure fails and our ballot measure fails, then you can enter negotiations and you're probably looking at six months to eight months of negotiation.
I mean, if they go on a ballot member, they're redrawing lines. Do we still have to do this thing to redraw the district if they've redrawn it, if they go out?
I don't think they're gonna be ready to leave on July one twenty twenty-four. I think they're gonna push it the same way. I just, it's so, it's too much work.
Well, I mean, for them to even go on the ballot, they have to, they have to say Milwaukee's not in, right? If we're, if we're, we.
For the new district.
Anyway, I, I don't wanna get bogged down in timeline. Let's do this over email.
Okay, so I will, um, who is, wants to work on the resolution?
I mean, I'm happy to work on the resolution. I'm happy to be the editor, that people could send edits to me.
Okay. Yeah, the two are open, then I will be emailing around what the dates are, and we can figure out how you.
I'll email everybody, but I mean, but.
I, I really can't have a conversation though back and forth with you on email. So I'm, what I'm planning on, what I'm saying is, I'm gonna email you two, we'll have a discussion, we'll present it. And then on the dais, we can change all of it and I can present my reasoning for it, but I don't wanna create a back and forth.
Good, good question. Best case scenario. What are we looking at? Oh, I guess I should talk to, Julie? Because that, I mean, it's a different timeline, right? So what's the best case scenario for either climate fee or parks?
Well, those are all really good questions that we're gonna have to have on the dais. That's why I think this is a big discussion, because of the climate fee. I know for you in particular, you're concerned about how many fees you.
Yeah, now the timeline is now really true.
This is long work you all are signing up for.
Yeah.
Totally, hundred percent, and I understand that. Um, and this is why I think if we wanna do it as a thirty-minute discussion, that we start at the next meeting, that's fine. It sounds like we might be able to at least have a version of the resolution to discuss. And then we can always have another discussion at the March. It's a lot. These are big decisions. I, I, I appreciate much time and effort you all put into this today. This is a big, big discussion. Uh, we actually overstated welcome at the library. We're locked in, uh, it's five and watching behind Adam to make sure we don't have the public. Um, let's assess it and have our retreat again. Well, then, a short commute. Okay, I think we're it.
Are we done? Are we adjourned?
Second.
Move the second into adjourn all in a favor.